If you would join me in your faith, God, we come to you now, we give you thanks for this weather, we give you thanks for our city, we give you thanks for the opportunity to serve this city.
I'm safe, be with our.
Motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Curris is second.
Second.
Mr. Rice.
Show of hands.
Okay, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening? And on a special guest presentation, we're spotlighting this month Ursula's jury, and they cannot be here this evening, so we'll take care of that tomorrow, what we got. Board to commission liaison reports, pork board. Mr. Liddy.
Our meeting was called to order last Thursday at 6:05 PM, and we met at RV Park and had a dinner there together. We had a visitor, Mr. Roden and his wife, and they were inquiring about the dog park. And we explained to them that it was a, had problems with the water and the flooding and things like that. And I've also got work orders that, that I passed them out. We're going to send them in to the City Hall here. And, and that way if we see something that needs fixing or something, we can report it that way. One of our members was wondering if we could have checkerboards painted on some of the picnic tables.
That's an awful good idea.
Yeah, people could bring their own checkers and chess pieces and play. It was also suggested maybe we could have horseshoes or cornhole places at some of our parks. To set up the pole and everybody can bring their own horseshoes.
I think that was a discussion before.
Was it?
Problem is, parks are made for children.
Mm-hmm.
And sharp out being sticking out of the ground, they didn't mind it.
At one time it was something at the park, and I may have moved it because of the sharp out.
Okay. At the RV Park, it was David Carpenter said that a drain was talked about, but no finished plan was planned. So that's something we need to continue with, yeah, I guess. We adjourned our meeting at 6:00 PM, I'm sorry, at 7:34 PM. And then we're going to meet October 14th here at Municipal Building for our next meeting.
Any questions? Thank you. We have several appointments to make this evening. First one would be Mr. Eric Obermiller to the Waynesville Pork Board. I'd like to call for a motion to approve, Mr. Obermiller?
No. Is he usually for that term that long?
Yeah, park boards five years.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Mr. Davis, Mr. Wilson. Will you just show a hand on that?
Show hands.
Show a hand.
Thank you.
Would like to reappoint Mr. David Carpenter to the Pork Board. Do I have a motion? Mr. Rice and Mr. Connolly, all in favor, show a hand. I'd like to reappoint him, though. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Davis?
Second.
Mr. Da, ah, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, all in favor? Show a hand. Okay, planning and zoning, Councilman Davis.
Planning and zoning meeting was held on September 14th. There was a quorum present. The meeting wasn't very long. There was a public hearing held, which Mr. Cox was at the public hearing for the rezoning of the Woodland Hills construction area east of the Summit area. There were a few citizens here for comment. There were more here to ask Mr. Cox questions about what the intentions were for that end of Mesa and La Vista as it goes out, what he planned on building, how many buildings he planned on building. And if there was plans to make sure that there was an area at the end of, on the east side that did have access if the 200 meters of land ever got bought by the city to push in a road. All those questions were answered. We closed the public hearing. There wasn't a vote necessary because the committee had already voted to approve, approve the rezoning. But because Mr. Cox wasn't here previously, we had to have another public hearing in which he was here. But we went ahead and did approve the rezoning of the agricultural land to R1 in the Woodland Hills construction area. And then we talked about the final plat, and I don't know if there's a copy here tonight, but there was a copy, of Phase One of the Pinnacle of the Summit by Mark Rowden LLC. And that would be the other end of Mesa and La, Pinnacle, I guess, is where the road goes out that way. And that was also approved to be sent to City Council. We closed the meeting at 5:42, and some to your questions?
Questions for you?
I have a question. Did you hear many people question about the extra traffic?
On Sweeper?
How we're going to get in and out efficiently?
There, there was questions about the extra traffic, the route, Mr. Rowden's side. He's already cut in a road there to go up to the west side of the summit. Where Mr. Cox is putting his on the east side of the summit. There can be a road cut in because Bollinger's land is behind it. So he will actually have to go up Summit Pass and take a ride on Mesa or La Vista to get his trucks down there. The biggest concern was Sweeper Road itself. Because even where Mr. Cox cut in also leads to reporter Sweeter Road, Sweeper Road. And where Summit Pass hits, it also goes to Sweeper Road. So there were some concerns about that. The city can't really restrict on those concerns because it was just a planning and zoning meeting. We did tell them to go to Rose and Browns meeting, though, to make sure that the Rose and Browns, you know, can handle that. The biggest concern is the cleanup of Sweeper Road and half of Sweeper Road. Because it's already not in very good shape. When we start pushing dump trucks up, there has been dump trucks pushed up that road previously all the way up Summit Pass. Matter of fact, there's new construction up there right now, they come up all the time. It is Paradise, the extended Paradise, 30 houses, 40 houses, I guess. So there's already construction going on up there. It would just be going from one phase of construction to another.
I can answer your question.
Great mind.
All right, Bill 2021, Day 38, reading please.
First reading, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential for property located at the end of La Vista and Mesa, east of the Summit subdivision in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date. An ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential for property located at the end of La Vista and Mesa, east of the Summit subdivision in Waynesville, Missouri, fixing an effective date.
Thank you. Open floor for discussion, any discussion on this?
I've got a question addressed to our administrator. Can we, in the future, when we're looking at new subdivisions or additions to subdivisions, maybe have a, some type of density clause or whatever about the extra amount of traffic because the roads are originally built for the one subdivision? And as they keep getting bigger and bigger, it's going to put more abuse on the road system? Is there any way we can do that?
I can kind of actually answer that. Because the Summit area was part of the master plan in 2004. In 2004, they approved all of that land to be residential land in a, in a plat.
Well, I found asking a question.
So in the future, I would say yes, but on this specific one, because it was a master plan and everything. Planning and zoning approved that master plan for it all to be residential up there and...
Well, I'm not, I'm not trying to hamper the developers, that's not my point. My point is, I'm looking at what's going to happen to the extra traffic, because all the extra homes.
I think that, I think that John can answer that, because that was brought up about the several options we had when we approved these plats.
So I will say that Cecil is correct, in '04, that happened with one entrance. So technically, we've kind of helped the situation at the summit. But let's move forward and let's look at what we have, you know, even at the summit. I'm going to keep up there. We've, with, with these contractors, with these developers, they've actually been, a lot of times, they will run down a ridge that, that would be like a really good way out of the subdivision, but they don't own the property. Well, they're interested in that lot at the end of a cul-de-sac, and that's it. So in discussions early on that we've had with these guys, we've like, kind of eliminated that. And so we want this road to run all the way to your property line, as we see this as a future outlet for that subdivision, okay? So with the summit and the existing subdivisions, kind of stuck with what we got, but we're trying to improve it, okay? So Roads and Grounds is going to get real busy.
That's why I'm asking a question.
Yeah, so here's another, here's another aspect that was brought up. Let's talk about Sweedburg and 66. That's an intersection that is going to see a lot of traffic. It's going to resemble T Highway in 66, right? Remember them old days?
Yep.
And you guys, so now we, we got a discussion to have with MoDOT. And the thing is, is, the important thing is that the city recognize those complexities now and start planning for those now, even at the committee level. It's not too soon to have that discussion with MoDOT, whether it be at the local level or the next step up, because we see it coming. What, what do we figure up there, 160 homes on one side, and maybe, you know, another 80 on the other, and then plus what's there? And so there's a lot of development potential there. This will not be in a year. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to build 200 houses next year up there. But they will be aggressive in their build out. So I think we need to be aggressive in our approach of, let's get with MoDOT, let's get with the roads we have, let's put our heads together and figure out to how we can improve upon what we have out there. And, you know, I'm, I'm going to tell you that as these trucks take that roadway, as these, these heavy equipment, they, they use that road, we're going to, we're going to, it's going to injure, you know, we're going to have some issues there.
It's going to break down the road, the asphalt, that's all that matters.
And so I will tell you that the master plan needs to be revised to accommodate these, these roads that get targeted like that. One way in, one way out, two trips for every large vehicle, and the next thing you know, you know, you're going to have failures in that road.
That's why I'm asking my question and bringing this up.
So...
If it's going to be 160 houses, we know that's at least 320 cars, that's going to be an everyday deal.
Everyday deal.
Some, some may be more than that.
So then, to go the final step of what could the city do? There, there are some, right now, currently, the city doesn't have any requirements on one-way-in, one-way-out subdivisions. You could place requirements on that. We could look at zoning requirements, subdivisions over a certain number of homes, certain number of lots must have additional ingress egress, you know, capabilities, at least planned into the, the, the master plan. You know, so that's not unusual, not unheard of, and that's something maybe we should consider as we move forward.
And Waynesville's full of one-way-in, one-way-out locations?
Both, you know, I, I'll say that's not unusual for any community with this topography, okay? So I have done subdivisions, I, that was my, I love designing subdivisions, and especially in this area, because it's, it's challenging. And it's not unusual because of the topography. You, you have a ridge, you know, look at, look at your county subdivisions. You, you've got Northern Heights, you've got even Southside, really, one way in, one way out, you know? Many, many homes. And that's, that's just because of the way the topography lays. You just, you, you fall off in this big ravine, and there's no easy way to get a road through there or in there, so...
Do we have planning zone and building license requirements where the county does not?
That's true.
Dictate more at how you can develop?
And we want to start that, I think. I think that's what I'm kind of hearing from everybody involved through this process on this particular subdivision.
Any other questions? Thank you, John. I have a motion to approve this ordinance. Mr. Rice?
Second.
Mr. Connolly, roll call, please.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farner?
Yes.
Thank you.
You have a, next ordinance for Bill is 2021-47, reading please.
An ordinance approving the final plat for Phase One of Pinnacle at the Summit, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance approving the final plat for Phase One of Pinnacle at the Summit, fixing an effective date.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do I have a motion on this ordinance?
Motion.
Second, Mr. Curtis, who seconded?
Please.
Mr. Davis, roll call, please.
Councilman Farner?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, standing committees, utility, Mr. Connolly.
The utility committee met on September 7th at City Hall. We had approved that we admitted, we had those citizens comment. And then we listened to a presentation of technical engineering. They presented us a cost of service study for the electric utilities, the electric department. And that review indicated that the current availability charge was insufficient for the needs of the city. And they proposed that we raise both the availability charge and the actual charge for kilowatt hour, which would have allowed it to about a 5% raise. The committee, after some discussion, decided not to do that, only to increase the availability charge, which is about a 2%, 2% to 2.5% increase. That should last, see how that goes to the next year or so. And if we have an ordinance for that tonight, and if it's approved, it will go into effect with the October billing. We reviewed the Code of Ethics ordinance again. Councilman Wilson suggested that the state statute be cited in that, other than that it is approved, and we'll have a hearing for an ordinance on that. We looked at the Volkswagen Trust Program application, which had been submitted. Our, we talked about the preliminary budget meeting through the month of September, giving us the schedule. We have a electric truck and a miniak excavator that were used by the electric department. They're, they're budgeted items, and the bids will be submitted before approval. Need for a closed session? That lasted for a few minutes, longer than what I said about here. And next meeting is scheduled October 5th through 30th, hopefully it'll be much shorter than the last one.
Question from Mr. Connolly?
Yes.
Could you have an ordinance? Ordinance number 2021-41.
An ordinance submitting municipal code regarding availability charges for electric services provided by the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance submitting municipal code regarding availability charges for electric services provided by the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date.
Thank you. Discussion?
Can we get some input from our administrator, please?
Okay, so we've discussed in the past few months with the utility rate studies that will be coming through. We're going to, we're reviewing electric, sewer water, natural gas. Electric was the first one through, and here's why. But, and it was sheer by luck, but in October last year, they started this study. In February, we all remember what happened in February. By ordinance, we were not, by ordinance, we cannot pass that cost through. We charge our, our residents per kilowatt hour, and that is what we held. And if you noticed around the, just, just this area, the area that really got hit hard, a lot of the cities had special meetings, and they immediately reacted to raising the rate for a period of two years, five years, and then they would reevaluate. But, but here, we actually just said, you know, hey, we're in the middle of this process, let's not react until we have the answer of where we're at. So with everything being the same, they actually used the February data, but used it more as an outlier instead of, you know, this is where we're at. So we had a good sampling of probably 36 months of data that they were able to use, okay? So let's talk about the rates. As Ed said, the, the rates that they, they recommended us to increase, to say it's a 5% increase is a little bit of a play on words, because every customer is affected differently. Now, on average, yes, it's 5%. But then you've got this user profile in here that you've got to find out, because a large user may be 8%. A, a smaller user may only be 4%. You see what I'm saying? So the user profile also plays into it. One thing they recognized as, as the analyst here was our availability fee across the board was low. And so they recommended that that has really nothing to do with selling electric. That has everything to do with getting electric to the people to sell. And we're, we're short here on this one, okay? So we recognized as a committee that we needed to probably get that in, in check. So we took that to get in check in the three residential, small commercial, large commercial, the, the three entities or departments that we serve here. And we took the full recommendation that they gave, okay? So residential only sees that increase, their kilowatt hour doesn't change, it stays the same. Small commercial, they, they only see that increase, their kilowatt hour doesn't change. Large commercial only sees that increase, their kilowatt hour does not change, but their demand changes. So if you look at the 1080, we did adjust the demand. This is the only billing structure in this that we have that, that we charge a demand to. And I can explain, explain a little bit about that. So the demand factor on a, on a building gets very expensive. Residential really doesn't play into the demand, but say you take a, take the school. They have a very large transformer, like 10,000 KVA transformer. Do they ever use that much? No, but they have a demand potential for that much, which means we have to, on our lines, open up that demand to supply to that if by some chance they need it. So that demand charge is very expensive when we get the bill from ShowMe. So we accommodated that, and then we also accommodated lighting service rates, which are your utility, your security lights. We went from $10 to $10.50 on those. Those were the raises. After we finished, the analyst actually said we were about 2.4%, 2.5% raise on that utility. He recommended that we track this for the next year, maybe two years. He says that the rate study that you guys have will be usable for several years if nothing changes. Just for fun, I kind of took out the ShowMe agreement and went back to the old agreement. And I wanted to know what that looked like. So the decisions you guys have already made in the previous years has benefited the citizens of this community, because the rate would have greatly went up. If we would have went back to our old agreement that we had, that number was much larger, and we would have had to accommodate that. We gave them the new numbers, saying this is how they bill us now, and it changes, it changes your analysis of the rate. So we, we went up about half what they recommended, we're going to track it. We track it two ways. I track it, I track it monthly through the budget, okay? So I get to see that through the budget. Then we also track it on mid-year and end of year to see how it looks like in, in that department's budget, okay? So I grabbed Daniel's stuff, and, and like right now, we're going through budget analysis for next year to get to our preliminary and final. And we dive into this to see what it looks like, to see, you know, where it's, where it's going to be. And I'm pretty confident we can make this work. We're going to, we're going to see where it comes out, though. And six-month mid-year review next year, we may be back at this table discussing, but I'm hopeful not. Hey, I'm confident we're, we've made a, the right decisions in this department to push us through.
No other questions? I like a motion to approve this ordinance?
Motion.
Mr. Connolly? Mr. Rice, second, roll call?
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Economic Development, Mr. Rice?
Yes. The Economic Development and Governmental Affairs Committee meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. We had a quorum, we had one special guest, and that's Councilman Ed Connolly. The meetings were, minutes were approved. The second draft of the Code of Ethics was presented to the committee. The section I was updated with the charisma. Code of Ethics will be sent to the City Council for approval. We talked about some grant updates, the Volkswagen up, uh, grant again. The application was submitted. We talked about the T-Mobile grant, it's in the process of submitting. We also discussed the American Rescue Act Plan funding, which funds should be available this month. We also discussed the Forest Relief Program, which I've... We also discussed the Forest Releaf Program, which is a play on the word there. It was approved for 30 trees to replace the trees that had been removed from the park due to ash board. Mr. Doyle presented the Adopt a Spot Program to the committee. This is an older program that had kinda been rediscovered. I'd like to get the program going again. Committee agreed on that. We discussed the Business Spotlight. Chairman Farnum brought up Downtown Service Station, which is not a new business, but it has new owners. We also discussed the new pharmacy on West Waynesville. We discussed the Blue Bee, the Hoed Dogs, and Rags to Riches, and we decided on Ursula's jewelry. And from there, we talked about special events. We had several this month. September 11th, there was a Free Women's Center 5K. The 17th, Homecoming Parade and Community Pride Night, that's tomorrow. 17th also, we still have the Still Usable Ministries Church Prayer Walk. On the 18th, we'll have the Mid Missouri Fall Extravaganza. And the 25th, we have the Blue Star Families, the Teddy Bear Picnic. And other business, discussed the Economic Development Coordinator position. There's been two interviews already set up. We also talked about the Plaskett County Growth Alliance. Councilman Connolly is a city representative of that board. The board lost a lot of money when they lost the DMV funding, so trying to make up for that. There's still other large members contributing. Committee will, would like them to continue as the organization, would like to find additional help from SOP. Committee feels their interaction could be beneficial. We also discussed preliminary 2022 fiscal year budget meeting, which is scheduled for September. They're currently working on the meeting with departments to go over the budgets. Final review and approval will be set for November. There was a need for closed session. Committee entered closed session at 5:42. We were returned at 6:06. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned. Next meeting is scheduled for October 14th.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Economic Development Committee, finish that one. How about Police Committee? Mr. Wilson?
September 9th was the Emergency Services and Police Committee meeting. The meeting was called to order at 3:30. There was a quorum. There was no citizen comments. August 12th, minutes were approved and accepted as published. Of course, you already heard about the Code of Ethics. That, that initiative has been sent forth through every committee, so you'll keep hearing that over and over, so I won't get into details for that. But with the police policies, there was two considerations that we talked about or discussed. The administration of Narcan, it was sent to legal for review a few months ago. Legal saw no changes needed, just to be advised, remove the diagram, and the diagram was just a picture of how to administer the Narcan. So, that was suggested to be moved, so that in case there was any differences with the device, we wouldn't have to go back and, and change it. So, we just kinda left the instructions, the written instructions, but took the picture away. So, that was moved forward. That was a motion that was made, and it was approved. Vehicle pursuit, the vehicle pursuit policy was also sent for legal. No changes needed, but the motions were made to send it to the city council for approval, and we'll hear a little bit more about that after my presentation. The motion was seconded and also approved. Grant updates with regard to the Police Committee. Labor Day Drive Sober, Get Pulled Over Campaign was complete. There are still funds available until September 30th, and they, they expressed a great urgency and participation to, to expend those funds in that matter with the, with the grant that was given. Also, the Police Department update, September 17th is the homecoming party, I mean, party. It will be a party if we win. We'll have a party anyway. But, so it's a, it's a parade that'll be happening, and the streets will be closed, and you need to be aware of this, because it gets pretty congested during those hours. So, what is this, September 30th, or September 17th? The street from the park to the middle school is gonna be pretty much blocked off, so the police services will be helping negotiate and monitor that traffic. Also, we have the Police Department will be doing some active shooter training tomorrow for the officers and the councilmen that want to participate. Other business, there's a preliminary 2022 FY budget that was presented and scheduled for September. The draft budget will be presented in October, and the final in November. There was no further business, and the meeting was adjourned at 3:52 PM. The next meeting will be October 14th at 3:30 PM, depending on your questions.
Any questions?
I've got a question. What's the name of your committee?
It is the Emergency Services and Police.
Did you discuss fire departments in your meeting?
No.
Don't they fall underneath your committee?
Yes.
That's been discussed in this previous meeting.
Previously, and open meetings also. Does the question be?
All right. Proposed ordinance, 2021-43.
An ordinance establishing procedures for the use of the Locks Run by Waynesville Police Department personnel fixing an effective date. An ordinance establishing procedures for the use of the Locks Run by Waynesville Police Department personnel fixing an effective date.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Mr. Curtis?
Second.
Mr. Davis? Roll call, please.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a second one. Bill 2021-44, reading, please.
An ordinance amending procedures concerning vehicle pursues and vehicle operations by Waynesville Police Department personnel fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending procedures concerning vehicle pursues and vehicle operations by Waynesville Police Department personnel fixing an effective date.
Have any discussion? Do I have a motion for this ordinance? Mr. Connolly? Mr. Liberty, seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Roads and Grounds, Mr. Farnum?
Okay. Roads and Grounds, men, on September 2nd at 5:00 PM. We had no citizen comments. We approved the minutes from the previous meeting, August 15th. We also discussed the Volkswagen Trust Grant again, and moved on to the Code of Ethics, which I believe we may have something on that tonight. We received project updates. There was pictures that Mr. Doyle had for us to show the no parking signs that were added on Francis Street. I know there's some people questioning what we did up on Francis Street, just placing some no parking signs. And also showed a couple parking spaces that's placed on Bitten Street, which hopefully will solve some problems people are having there trying to park the vehicles. We've got an update on completion of brush hawing on Michael Port and two new parking space, oh, excuse me, I just said parking space, I'm reading it wrong, sorry. The Street Department gave us an update on road patch cleaning under the Dyer Bridge, and it pointed out there was quite a few snakes under that bridge, which kinda scared them a little bit. But, you know, good place to hide out if you're a snake, I guess. We brought preliminary budget meeting information to, we discussed that. The good news was, we discussed a potential equipment purchase for a rover, which will help on our asphalt roads. And they have a price figured out. Did they find one, Governor?
So, they were able to purchase one early this week, I believe, that was delivered, and we have used it already.
Good. Was it the price we have on our list or less?
It was a little less than that.
Good deal, good deal. We also had a need for closed session. We entered closed session at 5:38, took care of our business, came back and opened session at 6:15, and then we adjourned the meeting.
Questions for Mr. Farnum?
I do wanna comment, let's put a little bit more there. With the subdivisions, what we just discussed a few minutes ago about all the extra traffic and roads, you really need to work on coming up with a solution in order to protect our roads.
That's on John's, that's on John's head. He's, he's already on it.
Okay, good deal.
Finance and Human Resources Committee, Councilman Davis?
We had the Finance and Human Resource Meeting on September 7th. We've changed it to Mondays, Tuesdays instead of Thursdays, so it's back-to-back with the
Utility.
Utility meeting, because a lot of the utility stuff also has finances to deal with. Meeting was called to order. There were no citizens' comments. We approved the bills, the minutes last month as written. The committee approved to pay Waynesville's bills. The committee reviewed the city's cash flow reports and bank account statuses. The city has completed 66.5 in the fiscal year, with expenses tracking at 64%, and revenue's tracking at 66%. So, we're, we're right on track in, in some ways, and not bad, you know, not bad shape. Toth Engineering also gave a summarized version of the rate study for the city. They said it was a summarized version, but it was still about 75 slides long. And Toth Engineering, I'll tell you what, they, they know their stuff. They could even explain it to me, I mean, so they had several graphs and pictures.
If you like PowerPoint, it was a great mess to be.
Yeah, if you like PowerPoint, it was fantastic. We also talked about the Plaskett County Growth Alliance and what the city was gonna give to the Plaskett County Growth Alliance. The Plaskett County Growth Alliance, great program. They're just running out of funding. I hate to see it go away, because the money wasn't there. But you know, with the Plaskett County Growth Alliance going down, that's one of the reasons we are looking for an Economic Development Coordinator. We're gonna have to have somebody that does know how to go out and bring businesses to the city. Fire Department, the committee formed an agreement with the St. Robert's Fire Department, the city council for final approval. The Fire Department, there's been two open meetings with the Emergency Management Police Committee. There was an open meeting with the Finance Committee also. All I can say is emotionally, I hate to say it, but when you're talking about the city that only has a certain amount of money, when you're talking of hundreds of thousands of dollars, that you're a steward of, and we're talking about getting roads done, we're talking about the fleet of the electric department, you know, rusting out, and the fleet of the, you know, police department, you know, there's a police car that's a 90's model, I think. So, when you're talking about being stewards of the city's money, it's, it's hard not to, you know, put the city's money elsewhere. Other businesses, the Economic Development Coordinator, again, we've had two interviews already. We have the last interview tomorrow, I believe. Code of Ethics, there is an ordinance tonight for the proposed Code of Ethics. It has went through every committee. It has been revised three or four times now, I think, and the final version's finally coming to the city council. We went over the American Rescue Plan Act. Paperwork submitted. They say the funds should arrive by the end of September, so it's getting pretty close, so I hope they're, they're writing checks and putting them in the mail. Fiscal year 2022 budgets, the committee reviewed the schedules. Every committee will be seen, or I should say, every department, I believe, is seen once or twice. I believe they're all basically twice, once to go over the budget, last one to finalize it. We rescheduled the October finance meeting to October 5th at 5:00 PM, and we're looking at doing them on Tuesdays coming thereafter. We talked about reimbursement of travel expenses. Travel expenses currently within the city, they turn in receipts. It's not really a programmed effort. We're gonna go to the GSA website for per diem. That way, somebody that eats $3.50 at McDonald's, and somebody that eats $12 at Outback, don't get different prices.
What Outback, you can go and
Yeah, you can go to Outback and get all you want, but you're only gonna get the per diem that the government
I said for $12, not gonna get McDonald's.
Yeah. I'll tell you, I can get Outback for $12 like a champ, but we don't wanna talk with diesel about food. There was a need for closed session. The committee returned back into open session, and we adjourned at 7:47. So, you can see that was a rather long meeting. Subject to your questions.
Next meeting on October 5th?
Did you folks meet with the Board of Directors for Wayneville Rule Fire Department before you made your decision?
I have met with Doug.
No, I said
No, we have not met with the Board of Directors. But to say that, as this was going on, at no time did the Board of Directors come to the city and ask to meet either.
Well, we're the ones that was looking for fire protection, it seems like.
I will say, and I'm not gonna argue about it by any stretch of the imagination, everything's a two-way street. I actually went and met Doug at the Fire Department. Another person on the Finance Committee also went and met Doug at the Fire Department, went through all, everything at the Fire Department, the grants, everything else. In the Finance Committee, we did read Doug's letter about annexing in to the city. The problem with annexing into the city is we put it on a ballot. The city votes on whether or not the annex happens or not. Even if we annexed in to the Waynesville Rule Fire Department, we are still looking at the charges from the Hancock Amendment. There's nothing emotional about, the Hancock Amendment determines what we have to pay Waynesville Rule Fire Department. The Hancock Amendment, Hancock Amendment does not govern what we pay St. Robert. It's a difference of almost $200,000 a year.
Mr. Harold?
It's emotional between fire departments and the city right now. And if we're talking about, are we gonna stop something because we did not talk to the Board of Directors at any time in the past four months, they could have said, can you come talk to our Board of Directors? I did get a call and several emails about wanting to talk to Doug personally.
Well, I would think before he made second big jump, if we as the city council should have a working meeting with the Board of Directors. Doug is only the clerk, he's not the shot.
I would think if they were that concerned, they'd have come in the open meeting.
Maybe they didn't know about it.
Oh, how many do we know?
Three of them came.
How many do we know?
Three of them came. Three of them came.
So, they knew.
This is emotional to me.
No, it is emotional. It's emotional to me, too.
We are the city of Waynesville. We're not the city of St. Robert.
And it is the Waynesville Rule Fire Department.
Right.
If we, okay, I'm not gonna argue about it, because it's been argued about 10 meetings.
Are we gonna spend a half a million dollars to build a building for St. Robert to park the truck in?
Nope.
You got those figures together, what it's gonna cost them?
I'm not arguing this, this point out. I've actually argued this in about six meetings. I actually argued for the other direction of this in the very first meeting.
Yeah, you did.
After I talked to Doug. And I'm telling you what, if the state of Missouri wouldn't have voted for the Hancock Amendment, we wouldn't be in this position right now.
Right.
I would like to make one change to the minutes, not to the Fire Department. Into the Plaskett County Growth Alliance, it says into 2022. It should say through 2022.
Okay.
All right. Proposed ordinance, Bill 2021-32.
An ordinance establishing a comprehensive Code of Ethics for officers and employees, repealing conflicting ordinances fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance establishing a comprehensive Code of Ethics for officers and employees, repealing conflicting ordinances fixing an effective date.
Any discussion on this, please? No discussion. I seek a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Connolly?
Second.
Mr. Davis? Roll call, please.
Councilman Farnum?
Actually, Mr. Wilson?
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance, Bill 2021-33, reading, please?
An ordinance amending the city's employee personnel manual regarding the per diem rates for reimbursement of travel expenses included while conducting city of Wayneville business, fixing an effective date. The second reading, an ordinance amending the city's employee personnel manual regarding per diem rates for reimbursement of travel expenses incurred while conducting city of Wayneville business, fixing an effective date.
Discussion? And I can motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion.
Mr. Wilson this time. Mr. Liberty seconded, roll call, please.
Councilman Farne?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance, Bill 2021-46, reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to give notice to the Wayneville Rural Fire Protection District regarding the city's intent to terminate the fire protection services, fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to give notice to the Wayneville Rural Fire Protection District regarding the city's intent to terminate the fire protection services, fixing an effective date.
Discussion? I think we got that discussed. Stand at the table. I seek a motion for this ordinance.
Motion.
Mr. Liberty?
Second.
Mr. Conley, roll call.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
No.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Farne?
No.
One, two, three, four, we got four. Four to three.
Yes.
Huh?
Yes, if you got four, it's a tie.
No, four to three.
That's right.
Four to three, guys.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into contract negotiations with the city of St. Robert for fire protection services fixing an effective date.
Discussion? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Liberty?
Second.
Mr. Conley, roll call.
Councilman Farne?
No.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
No.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wayneville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board, Councilman Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at 3 o'clock. June 22nd meeting minutes were approved. The budget reflected 69 percent revenue and 67 percent expenses. Motion was made to approve section and approve. Airport Operations Manager advised that fuel sales during August had fallen due to no charter flights and an increase of fuel prices. Contour Airline update, they advise it's been the best month for Contour with a count of 1,464 passengers. Mayor Orndson asked if Contour would be willing to extend through October, October 1st through October 11th, since SkyWest cannot start flights until the 12th. And they were going to talk to MoDOT, not MoDOT, DOT, for, try to get approval for that. DOT orders selecting air carrier, they approved SkyWest. TBN ground support equipment needs, personnel from city's airport. Fort Lindham would have been working closely with SkyWest to get questions answered and provide support. Needed to provide smooth transition. Federal Flight Deck Officer Program, which allows for pilots to conceal carry, is being addressed by SOP, very near to being where we want it to be. Time schedules, there's been many meetings to discuss the time schedules in order to provide better flights. Darling Battle has been in communication with SkyWest in order to get this moving in the right direction. SkyWest has proposed an interim schedule, which will be in place of the permanent schedule it can take flight until it can. Fuel sales agreement, Mr. Doyle discussed doing a fuel sales agreement with the air carrier. SkyWest has ground equipment that needs to be fueled as well as the plane. Fueling the plane will be based off planes staying overnight. MAP application has not been selected as FAA considers Wayneville-St. Robert Regional Airport has graduated from MAP to regular AIP participation. Bob Crane provided an update on board on terminal area master plan. Mr. Crane discussed a few different locations for the terminal, also went over to financial feasibility analysis, provided a summary of the program funding. SOP marketing report, there's been an increase on website users. The paid marketing, Google Ads are trending with positive click-through rate. Next meeting, Tuesday, September 28th, 2021 at 3:00 p.m. at St. Robert City Hall. With no further business, meeting was adjourned at 3:37. Mr. Doyle, do you have anything to add to that?
Working forward towards the transition, it's actually two transitions for the city. It'll be the transition from Contour to SkyWest. It's also a transition from an AEAS to an EAS service. There's, there's quite a few differences in those two types of services, so pretty excited to see what they bring. I will add another transition, instead of going to St. Louis, we will be going to Chicago-O'Hare, which has its benefits and, and maybe some setbacks, but we hope to overcome those.
We're making a lot of money out the airport.
No.
How much?
Make?
Yeah.
None.
How much we lose?
Hmm, 150 to 180 a year.
Gee, that's almost Fire Department money, isn't it?
Yep.
Maybe our priorities are wrong.
Yep. It varies depending upon projects, depending upon match that you have.
Doug has been a money loser since day one, every year.
That's true.
If you look back at the records, you will see how much
No, that's true.
We lost the city.
Hundred percent, no doubt.
We did it to help the Army under the brack when this first came out.
And that's true, yep.
It's time we get paid back for all that.
Mr. Doyle, other business?
Um, no.
All right, City Administrator's Report.
So, um, gonna touch on the preliminary budget meetings, we've been working through those rapidly. They're, they're going well. No major surprises that we haven't planned for since mid-year review. I guess there's been no UREs out there since February, so actually tracking very well. A lot of the percentages are lining up and, and things are looking good with that. Progress is going well. Economic Development Coordinator, that process is going well. It's moving forward. We've interviewed for sure two, got one tomorrow. Again, this, this position is open until filled, so that's, that's important to know. Utility rate studies. So Cecil talked about his Finance Committee following Utility Committee, and the purpose for that is we're going to have Toth come back again, and you're going to get to see another lovely slideshow, so bring your energy drink. I hope, I hope it's not as long as the last one, electric, there's a lot to it, a lot of moving parts, fluid and situation, water, sewer, natural gas. I think you're going to see sewer-water maybe combined into one the next round, and then natural gas. So that's one reason that we brought them together, is because that really affects two committees. But those, those are moving along nicely. The American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, we expect those at any moment. We've been checking pretty much every week to see, see if those funds have hit the account that we've set up to receive those in. And I wanted to mention the Forest Relief Program. I think that's a very neat program. It was a, it was really just the initiative of, of the people at City Hall that found a grant to fill the grant out, and they were approved for it. And I will, glad to report, we went to St. Louis on Monday, and all the trees are planted today. They're in the ground. We've replaced them in, in, along the park, and, you know, hopeful that they take off and take.
Thank you. Council comments, Mr. Farne.
Well, I think you all know how I feel about tonight. I think we made a very bad decision for the city of Wayneville. And you say it for cause of money. Well, we spend a lot of money, some good, some bad. The airport numbers, just a moment ago, we lose our butts out there, taxpayer money. I'm just very upset. We are the city of Wayneville. We've already got a deal with St. Robert for trash service. We're partners with them in the airport, and now you're talking about they're going to be our fire department. Why don't we just change the name of Wayneville to St. Robert, and we all disappear and St. Robert can expand?
Mr. Davis?
Well, I will have to say that not everybody's going to agree with the city's money, or the city's decisions. Where I say that the Fire Department, I voted against it tonight, but I voted against it because I looked a guy in his eyes, and I told him I would before I knew all the facts. When you're talking about becoming St. Robert, St. Robert's our neighboring city, there's hundreds of neighboring cities in America that work with their city next door. But my thing is, is Wayneville-St. Robert Fire Department, or, or Wayneville-St. Robert Airport, do we need to reallocate that money to the Fire Department? Or should we make sure we're not wasting money there, too? I think all money that is wasted should be looked at. And I'm not saying that it's, you know, if I go somewhere and, and I buy something for 50 bucks, and then I go somewhere else and it's $10, I think to myself, man, why did I, why did I spend so much money on equal or equitable things? Not everybody's going to agree with it. Decisions of a city have to be made emotionless, because when you start putting emotions in everything, throwing it on Facebook, you know, everybody says, don't play politics, but this is a political place. As soon as I start arguing with everybody about their feelings, then I might as well not be here.
Mr. Wilson?
Just want to thank everybody for the service, and, and all of the committee members. And I understand that, I mean, I don't even want to go, go down that road, but I'm going to say, I respect the, the, the research and that, that the Finance Committee did, the Emergency Management did their piece, they sent it over to my Finance Committee, and I respect what they came up with the solution. So that's why I vote the way I vote. I understand, I love people, I love all those different situations, but we also got to love the community as a whole. That's our responsibility, and that's our call. So with that said, I do want to send my condolences to the Fire Department for the latest loss. I do want to say that, because I do respect your service to our community, and I know that it's a brotherhood as well, because you guys are so close together. And that's pretty much what I would have to say tonight.
Mr. Curtis?
How do you make a hard decision? You can be emotional, and I respect Mr. Farne's opinion, I respect every man's opinion up here. But you sometimes have to make decisions. When I volunteer, this is a volunteer position. When I took it, the advice I got is do your homework and make the best decision you can. Do we always make the right decision? But we have to use the facts that we have to make our decision, and as hard as it is, you have to leave emotion out of it. But you have to come to a decision. The airport sounds like we made a wrong decision years ago.
Sure it is.
But we made that decision, now we have to live with that decision, or figure out how we're going to fix a problem that we have out there. And that's how you make, that's how I made my decision on, on what I thought was right, so. But I do respect everybody's opinion, I'm glad we had differences of opinion, that's what's called democracy.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
I want to thank Chief Godova and the Police Department, they do a wonderful job. I also want to thank the chief for inviting me out tomorrow for the active shooter drill. That sounds interesting. See you tomorrow, thank you.
Don't shoot no ladies with grocery bags. Mr. Liberty?
Well, I, I would like to echo what Mike had just discussed, thank all the employees of City of Wayneville, and to include Mr. Doyle's, his staff. Also, I received, I don't know if anybody else, well, I know Rob did, an email from this lady, this Mary Richby Christensen, about her mom Hunter's birthday, and requested that we do some birthday wishes, so I would like to see us do a proclamation for that.
So
Well, I think everything, everything that should be said, has been said, maybe things shouldn't have been said. Just remind everybody that schools insist, again, if you hadn't noticed, we've got kids up and about. And it's getting closer to that time of the year when it's dark earlier and my bathroom clock will be right again first time of the month. Watch out for the kids, watch out for each other, and do what you can to do what's best for yourself and your community.
There has been a lot of emotion on this particular ordinance, but I think somebody, many of us probably overlooked, I haven't. But if you read those ordinance again, there's a couple of things I underline. Intent to terminate.
That's exactly what he had there.
And enter into negotiations. This is not a done deal. We still have that decision to make. John's working very hard on this. But we didn't take this lightly. We looked at all aspects of this. That's why it's kind of worded that way, it wasn't say, we are going to do this. The intent is to.
Why don't we work on getting our trash business?
That's, we're done with that part now. Couple things I'd like to mention. Fostering Together Plaschke County has an open house from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the River, which is on the outer road of 66, just down the road from the park. Everybody is invited to attend that, they, they want to show their, what they're doing down there. Oktoberfest, October the 9th, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in downtown Wayneville on the square. I encourage people to go in and enjoy that. Good journey.